Yeah, I gotta just grab my stuff.
Who has got the cancer for you?
It is going. I can't seem to get in, so...
You don't know what's happening? I don't think so. He's only said anything. What's that? It's a very important person. I don't think he'll... I don't know that he knows.
Pretty close. Yeah, we did.
Are you alright?
I don't need a wifi, but I just got it working for you.
Oh, did you? I don't think I needed it, but that's okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. I didn't forget. I just been busy. I didn't raise it. When I got a life agenda, I don't... It's a risk back to me carrying that around, so I don't... I appreciate it. You know what, though? I am going to...
You ready to go?
Yes, sir.
You got any indication? Nice to meet you, Larry. Thanks, sir, for coming tonight.
It's pretty sturdy.
You got it?
Great. Come down, accept it on behalf of the city. The early one. We'll take this on our wall. Now, we'll produce one for you.
Oh, yeah. Well, yeah, I'd love to. If you would put your hand in my top left hand desk, you'll learn what all you require.
Alright. It will make it work. Larry, thank you. Good evening. I call this meeting to order. The date's January 23rd, 2017. It's a regular meeting for the City Council. Can I have a roll call?
Yes. Mayor Protem Bliss.
Here.
Councilman Clark.
Present.
Councilman Corbett.
Present.
Councilman Geddings.
Here.
Councilwoman Scott.
Here.
Councilman Saltis.
Here.
Mayor.
Yes, I'm here. Would you please rise, if you're able, for an indication to be given by Councilman Geddings and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
We thank God for having given us the opportunity to meet together here today, and we ask most humbly for a blessing of our gathering. Brighten our eyes with greater understanding, enrich our hearts with compassion and courage, and again, our gratitude for this opportunity of fellowship.
Thank you, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Right, hearing none. We have two presentations tonight. Mr. Myers, would you begin with our first?
Yes, Your Honor. I'm happy to read the proclamation for Random Acts of Kindness Week. Whereas our daily news is dominated by tragic stories of crime, violence, and disaster, often leaving citizens with feelings of despair and helplessness, and whereas Random Acts of Kindness Week is enacted to encourage Madison Heights residents to commit conscious acts of goodwill toward one another as an affirmation of the goodness and generosity of the human spirit, and whereas by performing small acts of kindness during this week, we have an opportunity to recognize and celebrate the far-reaching effects we as individuals can have on the world around us, and whereas any act of kindness, however small, inspires and brightens the day of fellow citizens. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council proclaim the week of February 12th through the 18th, 2017, as Random Acts of Kindness Week in Madison Heights, and urge all our citizens to join in celebrating the week with acts of kindness, patience, and understanding.
Thank you, Mr. Myers. The city published an official proclamation. I'd like to give it to our councilwoman, Margene Scott, who on behalf of council has been very active with this idea. So, Margene, if you had any comments, too?
Yes. This is, thanks to the council, this is the 21st year we are doing this in a row. And my husband was supposed to be here tonight, but he's... I have a note that he won't be here till 8:00, but can't wait that long. He was really the one who gave me the idea when we had a very kind act done to us, probably 22 years ago. And it was very frustrating because the kind act, I wanted to pay something back right away. But he said, "You know what? I think that the principle here is to do a random act of kindness for anyone." And so that's what we did. I brought the issue to the council here at the time, and they listened to my ideas and to my experiences, and they adopted it right away. So it's really the whole council that supports that. Plus, I want to thank especially Amy and everybody else in the city who does that, the work behind the scenes that gets the news out. And there will be an article published in the paper very soon in the Madison Park Weekly, and there will be... and explain things for you, so you'll understand. But I think the theme this year is very appropriate. You don't have to be in agreement to be kind to one another. So that's what... when we have differences of opinions, we need to respect each other at the same time. And let everybody know, because I've had many acts of kindness done to me, and I was so appreciative of it, and maybe I... and that's when I always pass it on. And I always say, "Do you know what you did for me? Because this is how you made me feel because of what you did for me today." You probably weren't even planning it, but it was a very kindness to me. It affected my mood today and my manner and my hope for the future, that everybody will be doing that as well. So I appreciate all the support that I get from the city and from the citizens. And we want you to publicize. Anytime we do something kind, please let us know what it is. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have another presentation tonight, and Mr. Myers, would you open it up?
Yes, Your Honor. Before we introduce our very distinguished guests who are with us, I'd like to read the proclamation that was approved by City Council on November 28th. And this is proclamation, City of Madison Heights, Michigan, a Purple Heart City. Whereas the people of the City of Madison Heights have great admiration and the utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have selflessly served their country and this community in the armed forces, and whereas veterans have paid the high price of freedom by leaving their families and communities and placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all, and whereas the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women from Madison Heights who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and the way of life enjoyed by our citizens, and whereas many men and women in uniform have given their lives while serving in the armed forces, and whereas many citizens of our community have earned the Purple Heart Medal as a result of being wounded while engaged in combat with an enemy force construed as a singularly meritorious act of essential service, and whereas November 28th, 2016, has officially been designated as the day in Madison Heights to remember and recognize veterans who are recipients of the Purple Heart Medal. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of Madison Heights, Michigan hereby proclaims Madison Heights as a Purple Heart City honoring the service and sacrifice of our nation's men and women in uniform wounded or killed by the enemy while serving to protect the freedoms enjoyed by all Americans.
So thank you, Mr. Myers. Those words will be hung on a prominent wall in our city building for years to come. And so I invite our special guests, if you'd like to come to the podium and introduce yourself and your team, and offer any words that you have, sir.
Hello, council and people. My name's Larry Prentser. I'm the commander of Chapter 1818 in Frazier Military Order of the Purple Heart. And I was asked tonight to make a presentation to the mayor. I just want to say that it's a great honor for your community to do this. Now, we've done, oh, maybe a dozen or so in Macomb County already. Nick here with Royal Oak and Rochester have already become Purple Heart Cities, along with the city of Detroit. And like I said, there are several communities already in Macomb County. And we love doing this. And it brings attention to, as the proclamation prescribed, the... it gives recognition to all those who... and I know there were, I believe, eight in Madison Heights community here who gave their lives and a number of that were wounded. And we do have a few here tonight. So with that, I'd like to present mayor with...
Thank you. I'll accept it on behalf of council. Thanks.
Any members of council?
Not a veteran.
Remember Killson?
Yes, sir.
Congratulations. Thank you.
You know, you sound like the priest now, so...
He's taking attendance.
Larry, would you go to the microphone, please, so those at home can follow?
One thing I'd like to point out, too, is Nick and his wife Joyce, they... we were talking about random acts of kindness. Well, Nick and his wife Joyce do this every day of the week down at the John H... or John Dingle Hospital, and they volunteered their time for, I don't know, how many years now?
Five years.
Five years, I think. In and Ann Arbor, too. So he's very dedicated in helping veterans. And if you want to tell them a little bit what you do down there?
A lot of people don't realize how much the veteran groups do, but the Purple Heart alone... My wife Joyce and I are the Purple Heart reps. John Dingle has about 60,000 veterans go there. Ann Arbor is about the same. I don't know if you've been there. They're enormous hospitals, but we donate about, gosh, I think about 30,000 a year. And like at the domiciliary, which is on Outer Drive in Van Dyke, we have 50 veterans living there now. A lot of them young Afghan Iraqi vets, female vets, trying to get back on their feet. Purple Heart does everything we can to help them get back, you know, financially, and we offer them entertainment. We have Paquette Square. You've probably heard of the largest homeless facility in Michigan. 155, is it, Larry? We have the Vet Center, a couple hundred, a manual house, Volunteers of America on Milwaukee. And the Purple Heart, we're involved in all of that, as is the VFW, the American Legion, and keep a place in your heart to always give. And we try to, when our veterans come back wounded or whatever, we try to help them get back on their feet. So, thank you very much. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
I'd also like to thank April and Hal from our Korean Veterans Association Post 256 for being here tonight.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. We have a public hearing. It's A1 regarding Ordinance 2116, zoning text amendment 1501. So right now, I'm going to open the public hearing for this specific issue. Would anyone like to address City Council on Ordinance 2116?
Your Honor, would you like some comments on that concerning the ordinance?
I'll close the public hearing, and we'll have comments from staff.
Yes, Your Honor, just for the public's benefit, because this is the second reading for council. On December 16th, council did approve ordinance 2116 on the first reading. It amends our zoning ordinance, and it's recommended by the Planning Commission and staff. There are a number of changes that I'll go through very briefly. Section 1 removes junkyards as a permitted use in the M2 district and requires special approval for such a use in the M2 district. It also removes temporary buildings and uses for construction purposes. Section 2 adds the special approval requirement for junkyards. Section 3 allows shared parking use within 300 feet of the proposed use. Section 4 provides the changes to off-street parking facilities. They must meet current standards. Section 5 allows shared parking to count for 90% of the required parking for both buildings. Section 6 eliminates zoning Board of Appeals review of joint parking when the hours of operation don't overlap. Section 7 through 17 modify parking standards for various uses and reduces the overall number of required spaces per use. Section 18 increases the required width of a parking lot maneuvering lanes by 2 feet. Section 19 adds a requirement for the bike rack for any development or redevelopment that requires site plan review. Section 20 adds landscaping and screening standards into the zoning ordinance, and Section 21 consolidates the screen wall provisions into the landscaping section. These amendments have been reviewed, discussed by the Planning Commission at multiple meetings. They also held a legally required public hearing on November 15th regarding the revisions. And following that hearing, they recommended unanimously the council approved the amendment. City Attorney's Office has reviewed the changes and indicates that the Planning Commission has complied with the relevant local and state laws regarding the amendments. And accordingly, the commission, City Attorney's Office, staff, and I recommend the council adopt ordinance 2116 on the second and final reading.
Thanks. I'll reopen the public hearing if anyone from the public was inspired after that. Any comments from the public on this ordinance? Alright, public hearing's closed. What's the wish of City Council?
Your Honor?
Mr. Bliss?
I move that we adopt ordinance number 2116 on the second and final reading.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
Support.
Thank you. See, a motion was made by Mayor Protem Bliss, seconded by Councilman Corbett, to adopt on second and final reading ordinance number 2116. Any discussion from City Council?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I wanted to kind of piggyback on not just not the line item list that the manager read off, but I did want to speak to the public in the sense that this ordinance amendment really allows us to define standards in our city. And it's something we hadn't really done before. You know, we were operating a little bit more general, and these are very specific requirements that lead to the aesthetic view of our city. And a lot of hard work was put in by the Planning Commission and by staff to really identify what those standards should be, making sure that they're not too aggressive, but making sure that it would still lead to the city that we could be proud to live in, to shop in, to just drive through. And so I wanted to thank everybody involved. I know, you know, I serve on the Planning Commission with the mayor, and it's incredible the amount of work that was put in. And chief among the people that have put in work on this is the chairman of the Planning Commission, Mr. Wakeland, who's in the audience today. And I wanted to make sure that I gave him credit where credit's due, because a lot of these ideas came directly from him. And I just want to share how appreciative I am on behalf of City Council, the amount of work and effort that you put in.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Alright, hearing none. We'll vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Reports on agenda of interest to parties in the audience. Alright, meeting open to the public. If anyone would like to address City Council on any subject, you may do it so at this time. It's not required, but I'd appreciate if you could give your name and address. Thank you.
My name's Gloria Moore. I live at 27368 Daripaw. Friends of the Madison Heights Area Senior Citizens is a 501(c)(3) independent organization devoted to helping seniors. And we meet every third Tuesday. And this coming Tuesday is going to be February 21st. It'll be at 7:00 p.m. at Wilkinson. We invite everybody to show up. Coffee and snacks will be provided. And if I don't see you before then, have a happy Valentine's Day.
Thank you. Meeting's still open to the public. Any subject? Please come to the microphone now. Good evening.
Good evening. Jim Capizo, 863 Vinoy. It was just kind of an interesting weekend for me. In the 1980s, James Hansen of NASA warned of man-caused global warming. And all this terrible weather we've had in recent years, I finally heard a corporate weatherman acknowledge that there was man-caused global warming on Channel 4 this weekend. So we just put in a president who denies there's man-caused global warming. So we'll see.
Thank you, sir. Reading open to the public. Let's see here. No need to rush, April. Good evening.
My name's April Anselmo. I live at 25608 Die Street in Madison Heights. I attend the Madison Heights United Methodist Church, and we have a veterans program there. And when the pastor found out I was a veteran, she put me in charge of it. Of course, I was voluntold, basically. I volunteered. We have brunches and dinners for veterans throughout the whole southeastern Michigan. They're invited every second Sunday of the month and every third Saturday of the month for brunches and dinners. The brunch, the second Sunday of the month, is 11:00 to 12:30. And every third Saturday of the month, from 5:00 to 6:30, we have a dinner. Everyone is invited. It's $8 a plate, but veterans eat free, and we have some really good food. Everyone's welcome. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Can you give the address to the church?
Forget the exact number, but it's at the corner of John Aron 11 Mile, right behind the Walgreens there.
Great, thanks.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, the address? 246? East 11. Thank you. Meeting's open to the public. Would anyone else like to address any subject? Good evening. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Just real quick, I would just want to say thank you guys for all the support that you give the Planning Commission, and obviously all the support that we get from staff that can help our ideas, you know, culminate into a vision that'll help the betterment of the community. And I really am rather passionate about parking lots, so good thing I'm already a civil engineer, so she can listen to me go on and on about them all day long. Thank you again.
Great, thank you very much. Would anyone else like to address City Council? Okay, we'll continue on. Can we... Communications, there are none, but we do have a report under D1 from the deputy city manager regarding budget amendments. Mr. Myers, do you have a report?
I do, Your Honor. State of Michigan's budget law requires that any budget amendments be approved by City Council. The budget amendments are submitted to ensure that the fiscal 2016-17 budget is in compliance with state law. Staff and I recommend that the council approve the proposed budget amendments and necessary appropriation of funds as presented. Two items of note in this year's budget amendments, I would point out. One is that the city issued the pension obligation bonds to address our general employee unfunded liability, and you'll see the receipt of bonds, proceeds, and the outlay of bonds into our pension system reflected in those amendments. And related to that, there's also contained in the amendments this year, a one-time lump sum amendment of approximately $1.7 million, which was envisioned in the approved council goal to, again, reduce our unfunded liability. And that's to go toward our retiree healthcare liability, or as the acronym is known, other post-employment benefits. So that's all, Your Honor.
Thanks. What's the wish of City Council?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
Sir, I move that the council approve the recommended amendments to the current budget.
And would you also move to make the necessary appropriations?
Yes, sir. I'd be happy to include that.
Great. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Geddings?
Second.
Thank you. Motion made by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Councilman Geddings, to approve the proposed budget amendments and necessary appropriation of funds as presented. Is there any discussion? Alright, hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Let's see, on our agenda, item E has nothing to discuss, but item F, one, a bid award for a police department utility vehicle. Mr. Myers? Mr. Myers?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Staff and I recommend that council approve the purchase of a 2017 utility police interceptor from Signature Ford through the Macomb County Cooperative Bid Program in the amount of $26,038. This purchase is to replace our vehicle number 107, whose approved replacement from the September 16th council award was utilized for vehicle 111, which was totaled on December 6th. So we're doing a little shuffling here. Funds are available through the insurance refund in the amount of $21,000 and a budget amendment, which we just discussed, to cover the remaining cost for this replacement. Thank you, your honor.
Thanks. What's the wish of city council?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Corbett.
I move that the council approve the allocation of funds to acquire a utility vehicle in the amount of $21,000. The funds are available through a refund of insurance and of budgetary money.
Great.
And your honor, just to clarify, that would be for $26,038, the amount of the purchase?
I'm sorry, I read the line. Yes, $26,038, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Is there a support for the motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Scott?
Second.
Thank you. Motion made by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Councilwoman Scott, to approve the allocation of funds in the amount of $26,038 for the purchase of one utility, police department utility vehicle, and a budget amendment to cover the cost, remaining cost. Any discussion? All in favor signify by, oh, Mr. Geddings, do you have discussion?
No, sir. I jumped the gun.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. We don't have any ordinances under item G or unfinished business under item H. So can I please have a motion regarding the minutes from 1/9/17?
Your honor.
Mr. Bliss.
Happy to make the motion to adopt the minutes of the regular council meeting from January 9th, 2017 as printed.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Corbett?
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion on this item? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Minutes are adopted. Let's see, nominations and appointments to our city boards and commissions. We did have some applicants. I'll direct council's attention to ITAC, Tax Board of Review, Zoning Board of Appeals. So I'll accept nominations at this point?
Your honor.
Mr. Bliss.
I'd like to move to nominate, or renominate Anthony Botrell to ITAC. Is this a two or a three year? It doesn't say.
It's a three year.
It's a three year. To a term that would then expire February 10th, 2020.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Scott?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on appointing Anthony Botrell to a three-year term to expire February 2020 to ITAC? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. He's appointed, congratulations. Any other nominations?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Corbett?
Sir, I move to reappoint Mary Ann Yemek to the Tax Board of Review for a two-year term that will expire on the 1st of January 2019.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Geddings?
I'll yield to Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Mrs. Scott.
Thank you. Second, Mr. Mayor.
Great. Any discussion on appointing Mary Ann Yemek to a two-year term to expire January 2019 to the Tax Board of Review? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say no. Congratulations, she's appointed. Any other nominations?
Mr. Mayor.
Please, Mr. Corbett?
Two more. I would move to reappoint Christian Tecker and Mark Kimball as members of the Zoning Board of Appeals, Mr. Tecker to a regular term, which will expire on the 1st of February 2020, and Mr. Kimball to an alternate term, which will expire on 2/1/2020.
Thank you. Is there a second for both of these nominations?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Scott?
Second.
All right, let's see, I have a double nomination by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Councilwoman Scott, to appoint Christian Tecker to a three-year term to the Zoning Board of Appeals to expire February 2020, and also to appoint Mark Kimball as the alternate on the ZBA for a three-year term to expire February 2020. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say no. Congratulations, they are both appointed, thank you. Any other nominations? I think that's all on my list. Okay, executive session, we have nothing scheduled. So before we adjourn the meeting, I invite any closing comments from city council. Let's begin, Mr. Corbett.
Just two quick items. First of all, just a reminder that we still maintain office hours on Friday from 1:00 to 3:00 up at the library. Any residents, welcome to drop by. I'm usually there myself, no appointment needed. If you need to contact any other member of council, you can do so through the manager's office and can make an appointment as appropriate, or a chance to talk on the phone with anybody. I wanted to just one more time thank, well, I know it was Mr. Saltus and Mr. Clark who brought the Purple Heart program to Madison Heights. Purple Heart recipients have always been important to me. My father was a Purple Heart recipient from combat injuries sustained during World War II in the Pacific Theater. So I have a feeling firsthand for the sacrifices and what that meant to them, more than just they put it on the line for everybody. And I appreciate the work of the veterans and in particular, those who've actually given up blood and sacrificed on our behalf. So thank you very much. It was very good of you to do that. That's all I have this evening, sir.
Thanks. Mayor Protem Bliss?
Yes, your honor. Just one thing tonight, I'm excited to announce that we're able to bring back, for now, the second year in a row, our council internship program. So that way, high school students can experience what local government is like. They can actually sit in our chairs and do an entire mock meeting. We're actually enhancing the program this year to include the ability to attend and participate in one of our citizen boards, to be able to go into that meeting. And just a couple of quirks that we'll be able to roll out as well, some new things that we want to try. This program's near and dear to my heart. I was really happy when, you know, my peers on council and staff last year allowed me to bring this back. Having participated in it when I was younger, I frankly wouldn't be up here today if that program didn't show me that government isn't so scary. It's not what you read about in the news. It's just honestly a bunch of neighbors who want to make the world a better place. And I think in the turmoil and I guess the difficult election that we've all just experienced, I'm really excited that we're going to be able to shine a light on how government can be. You know, how even if you have a difference of opinion, it doesn't mean that you can't work together. And I think that, I speak for, you know, my peers on council on that, we work together. You know, whatever differences of opinion we have, we find ways to find common ground. And I can't wait to show that example to the students coming through. And ironically enough, I was planning on speaking about this tonight, and you know, we're going to be starting to accept applications in a week. But I didn't know that our former mock council mayor would be in the audience. Ms. Emma Green's in the audience. And if she'd be willing, and if, Mr. Mayor, if you'd be willing, I'd love to have her share her thoughts on experiencing that program last year. So that way, you don't have to just take my word for it. Unless you even like it, then don't come up.
Emma, first, I want you to brag about yourself. You've been accepted to college, haven't you?
I have.
Can you tell us which one?
I was actually accepted to six out of the seven universities I applied to. Ohio Northern University, Baldwin Wallace University, Wayne State University, University of Idaho, Michigan State University, and University of Michigan.
That's great. Congratulations.
Still need Northwestern. There's a lot of homework, yeah.
Mr. Bliss?
Just, I would like you to explain what a student would expect. How was your experience last year?
So I was sort of thrown into the program by my government teacher. She saw that I was interested in government and was like, hey, you're going to do this. And I was a little hesitant at first, quite honestly. I wasn't sure what to expect or that I could really handle the job that I was being handed. I ended up earning the position of mayor in a coin toss, which was fantastic. But through the program, I was actually able to shadow department heads, see how the police station works, how our fire department works, and able to tour around with the Department of Public Service in order to see how they're maintaining water mains, things like that, just how they're influencing our community. And through it, I was also able to learn parliamentary procedure, like Mayor Hartwell, which was a wild ride. But I genuinely find it fun. But really, through that, I discovered my own personal passion for government. My personal goal for the year is to attend every city council meeting. So far, we've got 100% going, so.
There you go.
But any students that might be watching live, I really suggest you apply for this program. It opens your eyes to the things you don't really notice that's going on in your community. And definitely since the program, I've been more involved and generally, there's nothing bad that's come out of it, only good.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Bliss?
That's it, unless we can get her a attendance card or something.
Great.
I'm sure there's extra credit for you.
Mr. Geddings, any comments tonight?
One quick one, Mr. Mayor. The program Councilman Bliss brought up goes back all the way to when I was in high school. And I was able to be the rec director for one day and found it very interesting, got to be involved in a bid for a Jeep that did the ball fields and also cleaned ice rinks. So I think it's a great program. Kids get to have some on, or hands-on experience, and I hope we continue that program for a long time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. City Attorney, Mr. Sherman?
The only thing I would add tonight, Mr. Mayor, is to comment about our mock former student council mayor's wonderful comments about our mock student council. And I think that every one of those six colleges you got into would be very happy to have you as a student.
Nothing further, Mr. Mayor. City Manager, Mr. Myers?
I agree with the city attorney. Other than that, nothing to add, sir.
Thank you. City Clerk, Ms. Prince?
I just want to add that Emma also was an excellent student poll election worker for me during the general election, and she was one of the workers at our most consistently busy precinct over at the library. And they held it together well over there. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you. Mr. Clark?
Nothing.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes, to Emma, thank you for being here tonight. And you are a great friend on Facebook, and I'm planning to mentor you as much as I can because I see your potential, as we all do, and I would encourage you to get so involved in our city. And we're welcome to your knowledge and your interests. So please, attend everything that you can. And I know you're dedicated very, just by being here at the council meeting, so that's very commendable of you. I wanted to make a comment about the Women's March, since I am a woman and one of the only two sitting up here. First of all, I want to tell all the men in the audience, do not be afraid. I work with some fantastic associates, and I admire and respect every one of them. They have always treated me with respect, and so we are very proud to have them in our city serving. And on the women's side, I want to thank all the people who participated in the Women's March, in whatever fashion they were there. I know, I heard comments that there were, it seemed to be very unfocused and very disjointed. But I would have to say, women are used to wearing many hats and having many responsibilities. And I think that's what the display was. And I was so proud to see everyone walking. And it's largely due to the vast knowledge that women have about various things. This was not an unfocused protest march. It was directed to all the things that women and families, because there were many families there and men, have really needed attention on for several years, and basically for the whole century that I've read about. I wish I could have been there, but this was a little limiting. I was unfocused all the time, on the internet, watching what was happening, corresponding with women that were all writing in. It was amazing because I heard from people in California, Istanbul, Turkey, Finland, France, Lansing, and Ann Arbor. So it was worldwide. And I think there were over 20 countries that participated. So I want to thank them all. And I also want to tell them, much like Mr. Bliss said, to not be afraid to get involved in government. Emma's taking the first step right by being here, seeing a council meeting, seeing what they're like, taking time to talk to the people up here and let them give you the knowledge that you would like and the information that you would like. But I just applaud all those people that were involved in the march yesterday. And to please focus your attention in the future on what you can do, because no one is an island. You are not alone. We have a lot of solidarity and patriotism, and I know that they're willing to become involved. So I would applaud all the women and everyone that marched yesterday. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Saltus?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Those are wonderful comments, Councilwoman Scott. I really appreciate that. I also want to thank council and the mayor for supporting Madison Heights as a Purple Heart city. I think it's a great tradition, it's a great honor for us. I want to thank the commanders that came out, took the time to come out and perform the ceremony and dedicate the flag and the plaque to us. I also found out, a little bit learning about Purple Heart and the history behind it, and it's quite fascinating and sad at the same time. And I do know that, I was told that every veteran that died in battle actually receives a Purple Heart, too. So, you know, I invite everybody to go out by the memorial that we have here with all the names of the veterans that died in different wars in the battle from Madison Heights. Also, I came across this resolution. So this is a resolution that the Board of Commissioners, Oakland County Board of Commissioners, approved not too long ago. And it's titled Notice of Cancellation of Contractual Agreement with the Area Agency on Aging 1B. So I think everybody pretty much knows the Area Agency on Aging 1B. They're the primary funder for Meals on Wheels. So apparently, there was some internal conflict going on with Area Agency on Aging. I don't know the details, this resolution doesn't necessarily get into the specifics. You can certainly download it online, which I did. There was some, according to this, there was a resignation of the longtime chief executive officer of Area Agency, for whatever reason. Then, this is what upsets me. The Board of Commissioners start talking about that they weren't invited to this meeting or whatever internal conflict they had, they talked about it was considered a lack of respect, they called it a lack of appreciation. Now, I get up to that point. But what I disagree with firmly is that they say that now therefore be resolved, that they reserve to write or provide a written notice that they're going to withdraw the funding or cancel the agreement. That's what really irritates me because, all right, fine, if there's some internal conflict going on with that agency, fine, pass it on to the Attorney General, you know, do some type of legal investigation. But you're withdrawing the money or threatening to do that, and that money goes to seniors for the Meals on Wheels. Now, I went and was a ride-along on those twice, and I saw firsthand what it was like. It's devastating, you know, the deliveries at their home. And there's a huge lack of funding, and to go ahead and threaten, I assume it's an idle threat, that they wouldn't necessarily really do it, but just the fact that they threatened to withdraw that money and the devastation that would cause for the seniors that didn't get the Meals on Wheels. I'm really upset with that. So I'd like to make a motion or request that the city manager, that we write some type of resolution as a council body here. I know it's non-binding, but this is kind of a, this was sort of non-binding itself, stating that, you know, the devastation that would happen if this were to occur for our seniors in Madison Heights as well as throughout Oakland County. I'd like to have something, try to stay neutral, but at least voice... I like to have something, try to stay neutral, but at least voice what I think, an important voice, that they heard, they can be heard, that they don't make these type of threats So if we, do I need a second, or?
What kind of, I know the county gave Area Agency 90 days to produce some information. What would the timing of your request be? Within those 90 days or after the 90 days?
Yeah, within the 90 days. According to the language, they were able, Oakland County, to exercise the right to cancel the contractual agreement between the county and Area Agency on Aging 1B upon 90-day notice. So I guess they were given their 90 days' notice. Again, I wanted something neutral, but at least to say, you know, don't threaten the money because of the devastation it would cause for the seniors. And I think it was a misjudgment on their part for doing that. And I don't necessarily want that in the resolution, but I just want something that says, states that, don't play with seniors' lives.
Is there support for this motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Gettings?
I'll support, but I don't know, can we take action, or do we have to add it to the agenda? I'm not trying to throw a roadblock at you, David.
All right, okay, I'll accept the motion. Motion, I think you need to restate the motion, because I'm not sure exactly what you said.
The motion would contain the language of the city manager and staff. Were you about to say something? I'm sorry?
No.
No. So the city manager and staff write a resolution stating that, to the fact that the lack of funding should not be used because of the consequences of the seniors, the devastation for Meals on Wheels. Something to that effect.
It's open for discussion now.
Is this to write a resolution to come back here with for our consideration, or to send out?
Oh, I think we'd have to vote on it.
Your Honor, I mean, as I was hearing the councilmen, I envisioned writing it and bringing it back to the council.
Yeah, I, I'm going to probably vote no on this motion, because I think it is way too early to judge what that was all about. I note that it was a unanimous resolution of the board, including all parties, including individuals who have marched to save funding for the agency. I suspect that there is a story here that I don't know. I appreciate your sentiments. I just don't know what I don't know, and I...
Well, we do know that they're threatening to pull the funding, though.
And I do know that the people are sober and serious-minded and probably wouldn't make that threat if they didn't think something was wrong.
Well, I don't think, well...
And so I don't know. All I'm saying, it was a 20 to nothing vote, Democrats, Republicans, Liberals, Conservatives, and I have no clue what's going on. I'd just be reluctant to stick our nose into it, especially when it is not something that has to be decided anything in the next three months.
Any other discussion?
Your Honor, I'd be happy to take this issue back and try to get as much information as we can and provide it back to council.
Well, okay, I want to restate the motion, just to be sure. Motion made by, we'll still have some discussion, but the motion was made by Councilman Soltis, seconded by Councilman Gettings, for staff to present to council at a future council meeting a draft resolution directed to the Oakland County Board of Commissioners regarding the commission's recent resolution threatening the defunding of Area Agency on Aging. Is there anything more to that motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Gettings?
If I could just say, in Councilman Soltis, not defense, but I don't think it's a bad idea to show our support and that we might be opposed. But on the other hand, having City Manager Myers come back with a report, this happens to be one of the times where we have three-week break, I believe, until our next meeting. I don't know if anybody could add to that idea, if you think that's too long to wait or not. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Should, if we stick with the resolution, should we put a date, a finale, final date on it, so that we can have, you know, more of a contract-type thing? And I would like to also suggest that he consider adding the words "for consideration."
For council's consideration?
Yes, that's better. That's better. For council's consideration.
So a motion for staff to present for council's consideration at a future council meeting, a draft resolution directed to the Oakland County Board of Commissioners regarding their resolution threatening the defunding of the Area Agency, Area Agency on Aging.
Right, 1B. AAA 1B.
So my understanding, it would, staff will work with some language, probably work with Councilman Soltis to kind of form that, and then it'll come before this city council meeting as a stated line, you know, item on our agenda. And it'll require a motion and second to bring it up, and there will be debate. Obviously, like everything, there's flexibility with, you know, if council members want to change the language or kill this altogether.
Mr. Mayor? Sorry to interrupt. Let's just make sure that the maker of the motion and support agree on how you've stated, how you've restated the motion.
That's fine.
Support agree?
Yes. Your Honor, now so that I'm clear, if council does approve this resolution, my understanding is we would be placing it on the agenda of that meeting, not waiting it for it to be added to the agenda, since you've already asked for it to be presented for council's consideration. So, for example, if we had it done in a three-week timeframe, it would be on your agenda for February 13th.
Is that the correct understanding?
That's, I'm asking that.
Because I'm about to argue for a little while longer here if that's the understanding.
My understanding is that we'll have a draft resolution for our consideration at an upcoming meeting. So that means there have to be, words will have to hit paper. That's what the motion's asking for. Put words on paper, and we'll consider it at the future meeting. Right? I mean, what else would we vote on? Right now, what would be?
I guess my question to you, Your Honor, are you assuming that this is going to be scheduled for a specific meeting?
No, no specific meeting, just a future meeting of ours.
We would, Your Honor, we would try to get that done in time for February 13th.
Right, right.
Your Honor?
Assuming we have the information.
Mr. Bliss?
So I agree with Councilman Corbett. This was a unanimous vote, bipartisan in both directions. And instead of spending staff resources to find out what happened, we're spending staff resources to write a letter to be cautious about what we might want to happen. I'd rather just get insight and then have this discussion after we understand what happened, to then decide, do we want to fight it? Do we want to put out a resolution? Do we agree with them after getting all the facts? I just think it's better said, you know, I'm going to vote no, because I truly believe we should simply ask staff to get us the facts, and then if we want to have a resolution, we can come up with that in the next meeting. You know, we've got 90 days before anything happens, so let's get the facts before we write something up and have staff time and resources to make sure that that's done. It's just my opinion.
Your Honor?
Mr. Soltis, I mean, would you agree to just withdraw this motion now and send our staff on a fact-finding mission and report back to us in a, I mean, on a weekly agenda? Just to give us more ammo, or do you want to stick to your guns and?
Well, to use your analogy, I think, sticking to my guns. I think we should take this for face value. They wrote what they wanted to write. They tried to create a purpose in writing this, and that's what we're reacting to. And that's how I feel. I think someone's got to stick up for the seniors. I don't care if it's unanimous, that doesn't mean anything to me. What it means is the language, to cancel and withdraw funding for AAA 1B, which is directly affected to senior Meals on Wheels. Period. End of story. If they didn't want to do it, didn't put it in the language. No one put a gun to their head. They wrote it as is. And so I'm sticking to my guns.
So the commission's on the record, so you're asking council to consider going on the record as well?
Yeah, 90 days, I don't care. What if it's a week? That's not my point. The point is, we read it now, they approved it, we react.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, the resolution was written to the executive board of Agency 1B. And I'm going to say it again, because it is relevant. It was a unanimous 20 to nothing vote by Democrats and Republicans, and they did not all lose their minds at the same moment. There are people up there who have spent their lives in services of senior citizens in feeding them, and if they've threatened this, then there's probably a reason.
There's not enough reason, though, for me.
So, well, if you had all the facts, I'm not necessarily sure you would say that. Maybe I would.
I would, I guarantee it.
Maybe two weeks from now, I'll be the one jumping up and down on the table. I just think it's a little early to jump into a fight.
I'm not jumping up and down the table, but I'm going to have to speak out for the seniors.
Well, good for you, and so am I.
Well, when you talk about lack of respect and lack of appreciation in their language, now you're talking about something much more.
Anyway, there's nothing I can do to...
Mr. Clerk, thank you.
I would have to say no myself, for the reasons of Mr. Corbett and Mr. Bliss. I don't understand it all. I don't know what's going on. Until I do have some information, I can't, I can't vote on it.
And, I mean, to be fair, Councilman Soltis is saying, you know, we're not going on the record tonight. Councilman Soltis is just asking for staff to present us later with some language. We're not making any judgment tonight. Any more discussion? Ms. Scott?
Mr. Mayor, I appreciate all the time that Days has put into this issue. He is very interested in helping our seniors, as I am, because I'm one myself, as some of the others are on council. But whether or not, I really appreciate his interest, and if all he wants us to do is consider it, I would probably be in favor of that. That's just, but I would feel much more comfortable if we had a lot of reasoning and facts behind our ability to make a decision on this, as to if we will support it as a group. I think, in the meantime, Mr. Soltis can also notify this agency and send him a thing and let them know that he has discussed it in public with our city council. But in the meantime, I would like to appreciate the fact that then we'll be able to gather facts on this, so that we can make a better decision.
Your Honor?
Mr. Bliss?
Just one final thing, and I'd like to ask that we have a roll call vote on this. Additionally, I don't have a problem with us researching and finding out what's happening. My problem is we are spending staff time and resources writing a resolution that we may not even need. And that staff time and resources is very valuable and very limited, and so that's, my personal opinion, is this is premature, and we don't have the information, and we're spending staff time that could be spent elsewhere. It's not about that it's not a good cause, and it's not about that we ultimately might not do this. But we should get the facts before we spend time and resources writing up that resolution. That's my two cents. But if we could do a roll call, that would be...
I'll do a roll call. But, I mean, to also be fair to the county, I mean, maybe, maybe we agree exactly with, upon further investigation, we completely agree, 100 percent, with the county commissioners, the premises that went into their decision. But we could still go on the record to say, hey, this is how, this is how Meals on Wheels affects our Madison Heights residents. You know, we're not going to pass judgment on the county's actions, but hey, here, here's a resolution just stating some bare facts.
Your Honor?
I mean, so there still could be a need. I mean, what use is that? But I mean, Mr. Corbett?
Yeah, first of all, let me just say, I want to apologize for my comments. You get into these things, and occasionally you say things you really didn't mean. My only point is, if we were having this conversation 30 days from now, I might or might not be okay with it. But it is way too early, and there is no background information to support. Like I said, the county has been very supportive. I know two or three of the men and women. And I just, like I said, if we were talking 30 days from now, I might be. I might be.
Well, I think we've heard all the points.
But I'd like to know the whole sto, I'd like to know the whole story before we jump into this.
I think we've heard all the arguments on the issue. Mr. Soltis, one final comment, please.
Everybody got a copy of the resolution. So everything that they wanted to be known is written in here. So, again, I just wanted to take it at face value. I mean, if there's something else that, some internal conflict that they didn't want to discuss, that's fine. My whole point was that they could have found a different way of conveying their dissatisfaction with whatever happened internally in there. They didn't have to threaten the funding. Like I said, they could have said, we're going to report this to Attorney General, whatever legal thing they could have done. It just irks me that they went after the seniors and said, we're going to pull the funding.
Okay, I'll restate the motion, then I'm going to ask for a roll call vote. A motion made by Councilman Soltis, seconded by Councilman Gettings, moving staff to present to council at a future meeting for council's consideration, a draft resolution directed to the Oakland County Board of Commissioners regarding the subject of the, regarding the subject of the threat to defund AAA 1B. We'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Myers?
Just one clarification, that's the resolution threatening.
The county's, regarding the subject of the county's resolution. Is that clear? Ms. Prince, roll calls, vote. It'll be yes or no, please.
Councilman Gettings?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scott?
Yes, based on the fact that we are considering that.
Councilman Soltis?
Yes.
Mayor Potemblis?
No.
Councilman Clark?
No.
Councilman Corbett?
No.
Mayor Hartwell?
I vote yes. Motion passes. It just needed simple majority. Mr. Soltis, any closing comments?
That's all. Thank you.
Okay. You know, the State of the City address is one of the duties of mayor, and I do speak on behalf of council, you know, with their permission. But the State of the City address is sponsored by a private organization, the Chamber of Commerce. And the Chamber of Commerce charges $10 or $15 per person. So for the sake of keeping it open to the public, you know, I'm willing to pay for anyone if they want to sit in at that early 8:00 a.m. breakfast. I mean, my speech is not that thrilling, but if you want to see the speech live, I mean, there will be recording of it, and we will publish the printed speech, but I will pay for your seat at the breakfast. It's Thursday, February 20, no, I'm sorry, Thursday, February 23rd in the morning. So please contact me directly, or the executive assistant at City Hall, Mary Daly, and I will provide you a seat. I also really want to thank our guests who designated our city as a Purple Heart city. I mean, it's an honor for me, just as the chair of these meetings, to accept these on behalf of the city. But, you know, we will prominently display this, and as the representative Larry said, you know, the least I can do and we can do is raise awareness for veterans' causes. So it was an honor to be reminded by those veterans of just the little work that we can do to thank them. Is there any further business before city council tonight? Hearing none, the meeting is adjourned. Good evening.